Well, good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council Meeting in Tuesday study session. It's Tuesday, September the 12th, 2023. The agenda is September the 11th, but it's September the 12th, 2023. The time is 12:01 PM. All members are present except for Councilmember Jensen and Krueger, who are both excused. Item number two is review of today's council meeting agenda. Miss Long to brief the council.
All right. Thank you. Good afternoon. So this is this afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. It is amended. I did review the consent agenda yesterday in study session. There are only two items for scheduling and the grant. All those were discussed. So if you have questions, great. If not, I will move ahead. Under section seven, we have one recognition and two proclamations. The recognition is of Gomer Roseman, Director of Site Development for Habitat for Humanity. Next is the proclamation proclaiming September 15th as National POW MIA Recognition Day in Pierce County, and this was requested by Councilmember Herrera. Next, we have proclaiming September 15th through the through October 15th as Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month in Pierce County. That was also requested by Councilmember Herrera. Moving to section eight ordinances, you have one item here. It's 2023.8. This is relating to pet shops, regulating the sale of dogs and cats and amending chapter 5.24 of the county code. This did receive a due pass at Public Safety on August 14th, and those are your agenda items for this afternoon's meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions about today's meeting agenda? Councilmember Hitchens.
Not a question, just to thank you to the staff and I believe Councilmember Herrera for making the POW MIA flag appear and displayed in our chamber. So that was some quick work. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that. Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. And Councilmember Herrera, we have you prepared to read both proclamations into the record today. You're good with that?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions or comments about today's council meeting agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to item three, briefing by members on external boards and commissions. We see Mr. Swanson online. For the record, Councilmembers Krueger and Jensen have joined us. I don't see Mr. Swanson on in the Zoom room. I know that there's a Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting this this Thursday. There's a lot on the agenda, including a review of the scope of work for the regional safety plan. The regional transportation plan at PSRC calls for the development of a first ever regional safety plan. So the scope of work for a consultant to help the region draft that is is on the agenda. There's some other routine amendments to the Transportation Improvement Program will be really releasing. We'll be releasing for comment the recommendations for rural town centers investments, and those are some of the major discussion items. It is a it is a quite a full meeting. So I'll pause there and see what other boards and commission updates members have. We'll start with Councilmember Merrell.
The zoo track met on Wednesday, September 6th, and Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember Krueger were there. Also, we got a presentation about a moose diet study using aquatic plants. Very interesting. We also got an update on accreditation. The zoo found out that they did not have a venomous animal protocol. So they had to quickly assemble a protocol dealing with venomous animals, and that's everything from a puffer fish to a spider in case something happens. They don't have that many real venomous animals that you would think of. But anyway, so they're moving towards accreditation. There's a conference happening. I one of the other council members, because I think it's next month that they will attend, hopefully finding out that they're fully accredited again. Also, update, it's taken three and a half years to get the electric trams up and running, and they are here. So November will be a soft opening on the new trams. Some of us did have the opportunity to actually ride in them, and they're great. It's a great addition to the park, very quiet, very spacious, a lot of windows. So it was nice to take all the grandkids and load them up and just go out to Northwest Track. Update on the northern leopard frogs. They released them. So we have a yearly program to raise northern leopard frogs from tadpoles to, I guess it'd be adolescents, and then go turn them loose. So budget wise, we're on track, not as good as it was in 2021, but it's still 70% of the budget is memberships and tickets. 30% comes from sales tax. So if any of the other council members want to add anything to that, great. The other meeting that I attended was the Central Puget Sound Economic Development District Board meeting, and there was several presentations there. We're developing our recommendations for the 2024 state legislature. So we're in the process of doing that. One of the big items that was discussed was the military defense sector economic impact analysis. Bill Adamson from the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership basically walked through what JBLM brings to the Pierce and Thurston County, and the dollars are astronomical once you start looking at where what is the economic benefit of having JBLM in this region? It's a tune of about every year, almost $6 billion. So it is the second largest employer in Pierce County next to the medical multi-care. And one out of every seven jobs is is comes from JBLM. So 84, 85,000 jobs in the South Sound area. So they've also, in talking to Councilmember Hitchens, one of the things that came up was obviously the impact of a regional international airport in Pierce County. And what was kind of a side note out of that is someone had the brilliant idea to say, what is the economic impact of all military bases in Washington State? So they were granted a $250, $250,000.
I was gonna say, that's a bargain.
$250,000 grant to hire a consultant to look at the impact to what the military brings to Washington State. And that's, you know, everything from Bangor to Woodby Island and beyond. So they're in the process of doing that, that to report back to the governor in 2024 on that. So they'll be working on that. And it's the South Sound Partnership also doing that. So that'll be interesting. And one of the key things that in looking at our state ask workforce development is always seems to be at the top of the list. But one of the things since we're talking transit is on September 20th, all the transit companies are getting together up in Seattle to talk about workforce problems. One of the challenges they've found is in this whole rush to electrify, they haven't included the workforce in that. So to develop the difference between someone who works on a bus now, a regular, whether it be natural gas or whether it be diesel, they're finding sometimes those skills cannot be transferred over to an electric bus. And so they're now looking at how they're going to augment their mechanics with more technicians to do the troubleshooting and maintenance on the electrical part of electrifying these transit buses. So they're trying to get ahead of it. So I guess all the transit agencies are meeting up in Seattle on the 20th to talk about what they can do to try and get more skilled workers to look at the electrification end of things. And they understand that that might not be the same skill level that a mechanic brings. So you may have to increase the cost to hire someone who is more technical than a, you know, a wrench turner and Councilmember Campbell and Councilmember could could kind of talk to that aspect. But that was kind of the thing that was was kind of interesting was listening to that discussion. So Councilmember Mello and Councilmember Campbell are involved in that. And they did talk about the drivers, CDL challenges they're having also. So anyway, with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Merrell, for that update. And the agency is in the middle of negotiations with the Transit Union and very much thinking about the workforce in light of the collective bargaining agreement and how we incent that the diversified workforce that we need for the future. Thank you for that update on on all those fronts. Just once in, we'll come to you in a little bit. Think I thought we caught you between committee meeting and now. We have a few other updates, and then we'll get back to see what I missed. As I tried my best on the PSRC update, we'll come right back there. Thank you, Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you. And just on the transit one, of course, we want to look at changing technologies. But I guarantee we went from diesel to CNG. We had to do a retraining at that time. And so it's many things on the bus are still the same and many are different. And this isn't the first time we've undergone technology changes and just need to reskill workforce. So I have high confidence in our ability to get there. Two things I want to talk about real quick, Workforce Central, which I'll come back to in a second. First of all, want to celebrate the Blue Zones kickoff that we had out in out at the La May Marimota. I see Alice McDaniel is has the fabulous Blue Zones approved clothing today, the Live Longer Better Blue Zone shirt. I want to thank Councilmember Krueger for joining us out there for the kickoff. Several hundred people were there. I think very well attended. Lots of great feedback and energy from the people who were there. Some people came up to me afterwards. I ended up staying there way late as people were talking about ideas, thoughts, how it could move forward in other areas. And it's really sparking a lot of the interconnections that we could never plan for, but we knew would happen if we get some of the same people in the same room. So thank you all for your support on that. There'll be more coming forward on Blue Zones work in Parkland Spanaway. Speaking of energy that gets created when you start focusing and doing work in one area, Workforce Central came to us at our meeting last Thursday with an opportunity to apply for a grant and would like the council to sign on to it. We want to submit it September 20th. We don't actually have study session next Tuesday. Monday's overrun. So I'm bringing a draft of the letter to sign on today for a grant for economic development in Parkland Spanaway. What this would be is we're applying for two grants. The first would be a 250,000 to 50,000 strategy development grant that would help us develop a strategy. The other is the development of a recompete plan. And that plan is what we'd do if we were funded $20 million investment in Parkland Spanaway, how we would spend it. Working, we're already got partners, PLU, Blue Zones. All those are on board with helping us design it. Right now, would incorporate multiple facets, including an economic development hub focused on growing green businesses in the area, a branch of the BIPOC Business Incubator, pre-apprenticeship training center accessible to technical colleges, labor and training providers, the addition of one to two key transportation line to hubs where trade job sec for trade sector jobs are located in Pierce County, Port Frederickson, childcare wing or branch that is closely tied to youth internship opportunities from a job development perspective, building refurbishment and updates to ensure feasibility, but to make sure that we have a place. And so it'd be bringing all this into the Parkland Spanaway area, up to $20 million. I have a letter that I would like to get over at Workforce Central, went ahead and drafted. And should have up there. So I would ask everyone to review it. And if we could by noon tomorrow, I'll work with Julie to get her letter, all that. But if we can know by, I think Julie would noon tomorrow work for us to give people a chance to look at it and.
So my understanding was that if the majority of the council, if there's no disagreement, that these letters are generally signed by the chair on behalf of the entire council, or if you want it to be individual members, I can have that prepared by the end of today, and people can stop by to sign.
I think individual would be good on this one. I think we really want to show a broad support. The executive showed interest in this and was helping coordinate some. I think we've got Porta Tacoma, PLU Franklin Pierce, EDB. As probably we're going to have many, many organizations. So I think a well signed document from our council would be appreciated.
Yeah. So if people can have that, or at least let me know that they want to be on that. I'll try to have that prepared for today's council meeting, since there's not often people here tomorrow, and we're to sign unless we can do that electronically.
We can use digital signatures.
Okay. Well, then just let me know by noon tomorrow, then.
Yeah, tomorrow by noon, let us know if you don't want to be on it. I think it's usually the the best way we want to do that, that way, so that we can do that. Before I leave that, any questions on this? All right. What a great opportunity of a lot of focusing, a lot of energy into the area of the outcomes that we might be seeing coming from it.
Thank you. Any other updates, Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I will be quick. So I'm sure that most of you have seen the letter that came from Board of Health Director or Chair Oshka, along with what's been in the media about the splitting of the job for our Health Director. But if you have questions or want to know more, please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to have a conversation. I think it will broaden our searchability and broaden the pool. But there is a financial ask to this that's going to be part of the conversation that the Board of Health will be looking at, because we're going from to one person to two people. So second, Crystal Judson, Family Justice Center met this week, and one of the things that we did was a review of our Executive Director, Craig Robertson, and the work coming out of performance audit and the work in thinking about how we kind of stand up and amplify the work of the county and city funded domestic violence center as really kind of a lead agency, which is something that has come to the forefront as a need, was part of the conversation. It went really well. We're excited to kind of think about how we can make them more like the center of the wheel to support so that we have domestic violence support services in the region that is meeting the needs that we have. And so kind of continuing to think about that. So that conversation has started. And the last thing is, and I was a latecomer, I believe both Chair Mello and Councilmember Krueger were at birth to 25, but they're continuing to kind of think about how to take the priorities that we shared with the board as far as their past allocation process. And they're continuing to have good conversation. There were questions brought up about if they didn't have it done in time, as in they didn't have it ready by the end of this month. What were the implications? And we brought up that anytime we delay processes with the way contracting is, it means they have less time to spend money. But they were thinking they just needed a little bit more time, especially to make sure that they were really getting at the core of the priorities that we had outlined, but also looking at an equity lens and really looking at impacts and how they can use the data that came in from the late night programs and some of the other work. So there's a possible delay coming with that, that funding allocation priority work that they are doing. But Human Services is aware of it and was on the call and didn't raise any major red flags. So but they're going to continue to work on that. And so those are the three. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for those updates. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, yesterday, we I attended the South Hill Advisory Commission meeting, and they had their first briefing on the long awaited study of incorporation or annexation into the city of Puyallup. That was a first look at it. So they're going to be digesting that report and coming up with a lot more questions. There was some initial questions on it, and I believe the council is going to get briefed on it in Octoberish. I don't have it in front of me, but I think the council is going to get briefed on it on them. And they have a timeline of some more input and questions, and they can do a little bit more studying on it. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Just once in, why don't we come back to you? Thank you. We know you were in between a committee meeting and the study session. I I briefed a little bit about PSRC Transportation Policy Board, but I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanson. That that is the only meeting coming up for Transportation Policy Board is this week. As the meetings start back up, and we'll still have two additional weeks until Pierce County Regional Council gets going again. The thing I would note, next month, the series of meetings going through PSRC, we're going to have a lot of conflicts with obviously our budget calendar and that. So there'll be much more coordination with staff and the members on this community to make sure we're getting adequate coverage of of making sure we know, you know, what's going on in those meetings and getting reports back. But yeah, Transportation Policy Board, today's Tuesday, so Thursday this week is the only thing coming up. And again, we'll be working with members for their PSRC committees for next month to see what we need for staff coverage due to the the challenges with our budgets, the conflicts with our budget calendar and those calendars.
Thank you. Let's see any questions for you, Mr. Swanson. So thank you for that. I'll update on two other matters. Last Friday, the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Executive Board met, and the main items included a presentation about the 2024 state and federal legislative agendas. There was a very interesting discussion about affordable housing separately from the legislative agenda. The next topic was a discussion about affordable housing on religious organization owned property. There was a bill in our state legislature recently that compels local governments to plan for affordable housing options on religious organization owned property, if they wish to do that with their with their property. So SHAPE invited planning staff in the city of Seattle to learn about the work the city of Seattle has done recently to incentivize the construction of affordable housing on properties owned by religious organizations. It includes a density bonus and a floor area ratio bonus. In short, for those of you that follow this sort of thing, those are the kinds of incentives that were put in place for in the Seattle example, some some other incentives, but it was mostly a density bonus, which is which is great. And so the the conversation quickly transitioned to what can we learn from the city of Seattle's example? What comprehensive plan language can Pierce County and other municipalities in Pierce County put in place in order to position our communities for for these opportunities in partnership with religious organizations? There was also a finally at SHAPE, there was a discussion about timing, about how we change our rules to elect leadership at SHAPE. So that was the SHAPE meeting. At the Joint Municipal Action Committee meeting, there was a good discussion on a number of topics. One of the main topics was about the summer teen late nights program, and we got a preliminary update at least about about the outcomes about which, at least in Tacoma, it's the Joint Municipal Action Committee focused on Tacoma. So at least in Tacoma, at the 12 sites, which sites were best attended, the demographics of the participants, and what the other early data can tell us about some of the early outcomes. There'll be a lot more digest of the outcomes. But we got an early snapshot because, you know, two days before the we had our last summer teen late nights program. So it was an early snapshot. We'll stop there. And we see a couple of other hands on external boards and commissions. I'll turn to Vice Chair Campbell.
Actually, I had a question about the SHAPE proposal with the lands connected with religious. Can we do MFTs on projects like that?
My understanding is we can if it fits the policy. We are constrained in county government more so than city government about where we can do a MFT program. So it depends on where.
I'm just curious if these lands are already held in tax exempt, because they're religious property. That's a benefit that we couldn't actually extend to them because they don't pay the taxes in the first place. So but would building a affordable housing project then compel them to begin paying property tax on that because they're now using it as a commercial venture? And would an MFT apply? Don't need your answer the second, but something to consider moving forward, whether or not it would be compelled to apply or whether or not they can continue to be under their tax shelter and run business operations under a tax shelter.
Good questions. I'll add them to the mix as we discuss, especially if we take up a policy, then we'll have lots of time if we take up this policy. Councilmember Jensen.
I'm hoping it's when, not if, we take up our multifamily tax exemption policy. And I think Councilmember Campbell, because I've had discussions with Mr. Taylor about this many, many times. I think we're limited on doing multifamily tax exemption projects in transit oriented areas. So it's a very small area. Yeah, I would love to see that expanded too. So that would be great to work on. I had a question, Chair Mello, about what outcomes they're looking at for teen late night programs in addition to, you know, attendance and all of that. Are we talking to Tacoma police or other law enforcement agencies about any impact they've seen on, you know, reduction in nefarious activities or kids getting into trouble or anything like that? Have we seen a, I mean, because I think that was one of the main objectives was to keep kids safe or maybe reductions in, I don't know, fights or other violent incidents. I'm hoping hoping that it had that kind of impact. And then I just wanted to add regarding the Puget Sound Regional Council, I attended the Growth Management Policy Board meeting last week, and they did vote to recommend approval of the Pierce County countywide planning policies. So that's certified through the Growth Management Committee. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Good questions about outcomes with summer teen late nights. You know, we didn't, we have anecdotal data right now. We didn't fund any rigorous outcomes reporting or rigorous analysis, as you know, but great question. I will feed that back to the team to see what, if any, reports. Yeah, we all want want to understand those outcomes for sure. Thank you for raising that. I'm not seeing any other hands for external boards and commissions. Under chairs topics, I just want to note that again, next Tuesday, as a reminder, for Tuesday study session, we are at the city of Tacoma. We're in council chambers, which is on the first floor of the Tacoma Municipal Building. You can enter on either side, the St. Helen's side or the Market Street side of the council. We are in council. We are in council chambers at 12 noon and we are not doing our regularly scheduled Tuesday study session. All of the regular Tuesday study session topics, including external boards and commission updates, will happen on Monday and the Monday study session agenda will be revised accordingly. That brings us to other, other business. And first, we have friends from Pierce Transit. We have Mike Griffiths, who I will turn it over to, who is here to give counsel an update on the Bus Rapid Transit and Enhanced Bus project that Pierce Transit is leading. Hopefully it got to you, Mr. Griffiths. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance at the board meeting yesterday, but did, did contact some of your team and am hoping you're also, since you're here, able to also update the county council on, on, on some of the other programs that are going on at Pierce Transit that are mostly used in, in unincorporated Pierce County. But well, well, I know we're focused on Bus Rapid Transit and Enhanced Bus. So we'll let you take it from here, Mr. Griffiths.
Okay. Thank you, Chair and members of the council. First, I was just listening to your conversation about workforce development. And just in our most recent grant that we got for three electric buses, the infrastructure, 5% of the grant amount that the FTA will be giving us has to do with workforce development, which is about $450,000. And we will be at that session September 20th with the rest of our agency peers focused on that. So we're well aware of that. And I think one of the reasons we got the grant is because our workforce development people did a really good job of outlining the needs there. So I'll just move on from there. So I'm here to talk a little bit about Enhanced Bus and what that is. Enhanced Bus is considered a high capacity transit under the definition from the Federal Transit Administration. And we had worked hard, extremely hard on trying to deliver a BRT project. Next slide, please. One of the things that, as we got more into the project, was assumed originally that this project, the BRT, would not impact any property owners or have minimal impact along the corridor. And there are a variety of factors that led to us recommending to the board that we pivot away from the BRT at this time and go on. One of them was when we did our, got to 60% design, the cost of the BRT had gone from initial cost estimates of $150 million to over $300 million. And so for us, as Pierce Transit as an agency, that was unaffordable. We had identified funding of about $197 million. And so we were coming up about $100 million short. And so we said, what can we do? And we started a value engineering project to try and see what kind of service we could provide for that 197 million. Well, when we got into that, here it says reimagine BRT design. There were no exclusive transit lanes and the travel time savings for transit, in our opinion, didn't justify an investment of $197 million because we weren't going to see the benefit for that. Also during the time period that we started this project, which started in 2017, the FTA had a policy change where they wanted to take, instead of using the 2019 pre-pandemic ridership numbers, we went to 2022 ridership numbers. Our fixed route services are operating at about 65% of pre-pandemic. And that's one of the key criteria that the FTA uses for awarding the grant. And that grant amount was a 75 million grant. And without that, we couldn't even think of continuing the BRT project. One of the things that we did find out, we have to do traffic impact analysis along the corridor. And when we completed our traffic impact analysis, what we saw is that most of the intersections along Route 7 or Highway 7 will be failing by 2030. And so part of this solution is to get people on some kind of high capacity transit. And so we also know that Washdott has a complete streets project that they'll be doing along the corridor. And the city of Tacoma also has a picture pack avenue project, which is subarea plan. And so when, when we think about it, we've talked to our partners on this project about, hey, let's just pivot over to a good form of transit. It's Enhanced Bus. And wait until Washdott and the city of Tacoma are finished with their planning and be part of those plans so that BRT can be built into them instead of us trying to fit a bus rapid transit project with no dedicated lanes on the current curb lines of State Route 7. Next slide, please. And so the fact that these risks were there for the $75 million from the FTA, we looked at it and said, we didn't have the really the speed and reliability improvements that we could afford to put in with dedicated lanes and expansion of the highway plus the 311 property impacts that would take place along the corridor. 50 of those impacts were going to be meaningful impacts. Some of them required taking full businesses and having to relocate them. So one of the things that the FTA had told me when I met with them is they only are going to do pack avenue once. And so even if we move forward with the current design and they gave us a grant, which we didn't think we were going to qualify for anyway, if we came back in a couple of years and said, hey, look, we're ready to work with the city of Tacoma and Washdott, that that money wouldn't be available through the FTA. Next slide, please. And so this is what it looks like that right now Washdott has five 12 corridor studies that's underway. City of Tacoma has their subarea plan underway and Complete Streets is pending funding from the state. And so when you throw all those together, this is a, you know, bus rapid transit will be part of the plan. We didn't completely shelve and say we're never going to do bus rapid transit along the state highway. But we think we can serve the population better by going to Enhanced Bus. And I'd just like to tell you a little bit about what Enhanced Bus is. And so next slide. So as I said, we decided with our partners, they agreed to recommend to our board to take these moves. And I talked about the joint BRT and Complete Street projects with all of us working in a coordinated way to improve the Pacific Highway. Next slide, please. And so what Enhanced Bus is, it would be a service that would start at our new spanaway transit center and go to Tacoma Dome Station. It would be a service that overlays the current Route 1. Route 1 wouldn't be touched, but we would offer commute hour service weekday mornings and afternoon. We'd have connections to anywhere where we have a service going east west on that corridor. We'll have stops. We will also put it in with timed sounder connections at Tacoma Dome Station. And it would be, instead of having the 64 stops that we make along Route 1, there'll be 14 major bus stops. The anticipated travel time savings for transit versus being in your car would be 28 minutes round trip, which is more than we were going to get with a reimagined BRT system. Next slide, please. So what we're going to do is we have existing bus stops. We're going to improve those. Sound Transit had given us a grant through ST3 package of $60 million. We had spent $12 million of that money in planning and we just are working with them for them to continue to give us the $48 million for reliability and speed improvements along the corridor. And so those talks are underway. And I would say that they are, they're, you know, I'm pretty confident that they see the need for us to use that money for speed and reliability. Right now, it's just with their attorney to make sure that we can use it that way. But it didn't specifically call out bus rapid transit. It just said speed and reliability improvements along the corridor as long as we serve the Tacoma Dome Station. The one thing that we think will happen is when we are looking at BRT, the start date of that project revenue service had pushed out to 2028. And we think that we can get a version of the Enhanced Bus started in March 20, March of '24. And as we move along, we'll continue to make improvements, but really trying to get people to move through the corridor a lot quicker than we could with bus rapid transit. Next slide, please. And so this is what it would look like. The heat maps are where we have our boardings and where we have services that cross along there and major places like PLU where we would have stops there. It would serve Tacoma Dome Station. And we've had a few of our commissioners go out on the route and show them what it'd be. And that really does move faster than the normal Route 1 service. Next slide, please. And so we look at, when we looked at it, we thought we can get the service up and running four years sooner. There are significantly less impact on property owners and businesses. We'll be able to coordinate with Washdott and the city of Tacoma when they do their plans. And then if we're all going through and doing work at the same time, instead of us coming through with the BRT project and then Washdott coming and tearing up the streets a couple of years later, it'll have less impact for businesses on the corridor. And then it also saves the FTA funding for availability in the future. Next slide, please. And so here's, here we are with what our next steps are. We're planning right now for the implementation of that. I will say that it's contingent on us dealing with our labor shortage because there's extra drivers that we have to give. But right now, we're seeing an increase in applications due to signing bonuses and some increases that we put into our starting wage. So I'm pretty confident we'll be able to have something up and running for our March 31st service change. We're in the process of doing an outreach plan, educating stakeholders about the Enhanced Bus program and what it is. And then we're working with people who have given us grants. And I'll just say that Washdott had given us $20 million for this project. And I just got a letter from them last week saying that we will not have to pay that money back because the work that we did on design can be used for speed and reliability improvements along the corridor. And so like I said, we're in the process as an agency. It's the number one priority for us to get this up and running by the March service, service change. And I think that the one thing we did find out is that there, we raised a lot of awareness about what's happening on this corridor and what kind of work needs to be done there. And so we think that it'll be a better system overall. And I think Ellen Landry is going to talk next about the next step. Next slide, please.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So many of you are familiar with the agency's system-wide high-capacity transit network expansion plans. And you can see that on the screen here. The agency is moving forward on studying the future lines of the high-capacity network and knowing that improvements such as transit signal priority, bus stop improvements and targeted lane treatments such as the business access transit, BAT lanes, all provide fast and efficient benefit to any transit line being served. And we know that implementing high-capacity transit elements throughout the system will deliver immediate value to anyone riding the transit network. And it can be done in a fiscally responsible and timely manner using existing infrastructure and vehicles. And I think it's important to highlight that all of this work will deliver a transit system to our community with greater frequency and reliability for customers while providing incentives for affordable housing developers and potential employers looking to bring business to Pierce County. Because we know that high-capacity transit systems are great leveragers of those assets. And we see that around other communities across the state. Spokane has a BRT system, Vancouver has a BRT system, Snohomish County, King County. Pierce County is the, the last to implement. And so we believe that we can get a jumpstart on delivering this quality of service if we move ahead quickly with this advanced timeline, which the Enhanced Bus program is going to allow us to get started on quicker. Next slide, please. So this was the topic that Chair Mello wanted us to speak to. The, we wanted to remind everyone about the runner service. And the runner service is basically, you can think of it as a public sector Uber or Lyft ride. It connects people within designated zones to bus service outside of their area or destinations within a specific zone, or folks can go from stop to stop. And currently, we have four zones. The JBLM Runner Zone, the Rustin Runner, we have a Tide Flats Runner, a Spanaway Runner. And then soon we will be bringing online a Puyallup Runner. And I would love to follow up with each of you and send you this information so that you could get it out to your constituents so that they know that this, this tool is available to them. And then later this year, we will be coming back to you all with a State of Public Transit in Pierce County presentation and discussion. And we really look forward to that. And with that, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Mathur. Thank you, Mr. Griffiths. Thank you for also including the Pierce County Runner Program there in the presentation. I think it's really interesting for a lot of members. It's not something that we talk a lot about and, and it's not very much on top of people's minds. So hearing a little bit more about that and seeing how we can get the word out to potential riders will be really beneficial. So thank you for that follow-up, Ms. Mathur. It's, it really is a great service. It just doesn't get as much attention as fixed route service. So questions or comments about what we heard today from Pierce Transit? We'll start with Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mathur. Just a quick question about the runner service and communication to the constituents. When you send us that information, do you have Facebook posts or, you know, some things that we can insert in newsletters fairly easily?
If we don't, we'll create it because I think that that is a great way to connect with folks. So yeah, we'll empower you with that information.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this question is for Ms. Mathur is also about the runner service. Been in discussions with your coworker, Ryan Wheaton, pertaining to the 176th Street Corridor, mainly to Frederickson. Unfortunately, Pierce Transit has this three mile gap to one of our largest employers in Pierce County. We have no act, no public transit to that center, which is Frederickson, as you know. And just trying to figure out a way to move individuals to those jobs as they continue to. as they continue to build out. And now that we have the Three Ten Project that is in full swing, which is the Boeing property that was purchased to build another, or no, seven, eight million dollars or million square feet of industrial manufacturing. I just think we're, and I understand that that area is not in a service, transit service area, but, you know, the buildup of Hundred Seventy-Six, they've added almost two hundred and fifty thousand or two hu- two thousand five hundred living units along that corridor in the last four years. And, but there again, it's a transit desert. So anything that you could think of that we could work with our employers out there to, to get some form of transit to Frederickson would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for a great presentation. I'm, I'm kind of ecstatic about the new plan. The other one was giving me heart palpitations with all of the disruption that was going to happen, and I'm, and I'm grateful to see this. And I'm wondering on the, the runner service, can, would that be changed a bit in the sense of running on One Seventy-Six to the Spanaway Loop area that would help with all of the residents that are along the Spanaway Loop area? Because I'm assuming they are in a transit zone as well. And my thoughts on the lack of service to One Seventy-Six, in consideration of all of the transit dollars they did pay in the past and did not get service, I would think they could utilize those dollars at this time i- in the sense of a pilot. And if it proves to be very beneficial, maybe the folks would then tax themselves to have that service added to the area. So just my thoughts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. I believe Ms. Mathurs will be joining us when we're down in DuPont. So please bring things to provide about the Parkland Spanaway Runner. I always want to call it the Sprinter. I don't know why. So that we have that available. And then I did have a question about the map where you had the four future proposed bus routes. They're labeled A, B, C, D. Is that just labeling or is that a sequence of when in your setting, you're thinking of launching those? And this is way in the future, but.
No, it's good. It's a good question. Thank you. So, so A and B, I'm looking at my map. I want to make sure I'm using the right terminology. Yeah. So A and B, we received funding from the legislature. We know that those are the second and third after Route One. Those are the most popular and heavily utilized routes. And so we received ten million dollars from the legislature to continue studying both of those lines. I think we're actually at a point now where we could, especially if we move forward with this enhanced model, we could potentially simultaneously deliver these to the community. So it, you know, A and B are in the queue next. And in what order, it will either be, you know, wham-bam, very close or simultaneously. And then C and D are, are further out just due to the lack of density and demand.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense, and I think I've seen those, the data come through. It's just been a while since we've looked at it. My other question relates to the Frederickson area as well. Can Vanpool be used outside of the area? So can we work with our employers there to encourage Van, like they are allowed to use Vanpool?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if you would, if, if it would be helpful for us to reconnect you folks with our Vanpool team, like I would be happy to do that as well.
Well, I'm wondering if making sure that, that we're actively engaging with some of our larger, maybe newer employers and making sure they're aware of a service because if they think they can't because they're not within that taxing district, there could be a misconception there of how that works. And if they're willing to allow them to park on site, it, it creates a way of, of using a tool we already have in the, in the toolbox. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that idea. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, and I hear the need to, to get service back out to Frederickson. I think some years ago, we did a video on explaining what the PTIC is and how we need to, the steps, the steps set out in law that we need to follow to do it. I have a copy of that video. I'll make sure that y'all get that so we can all be on the same page of what we need to do because I'm not sure everyone understands the process. We don't just come to Pierce Transit and say, hey, we want this and get it. We have a process prescribed in law that we have to follow. It was the council that signed off on opting this out. None of us here, but the, it was the county council that championed that and made it happen. And so our, we need to make sure that we're following the process to get us back in. And I will get that video sent over there.
And it's harder to get back in than it is to get out.
Yes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mathur, your hand is up before we move on to another member. Is your hand up, Ms. Mathur?
It, it is. While we're talking about this, and as we think about strategy moving forward, is there an existing group that kind of centers the Frederickson business community? Because there, we're actually having the same as that conversation down in the Tide Flats. And because we know it is also a mobility desert down there, it's very hard to navigate. But we're just trying to get an idea of like, what is the actual demand? And, you know, what do employers actually need? What do the shifts look like, et cetera? So like, is there an existing group that we could tap into to get, you know, to hear back directly from those employers and just connect with them?
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I believe there is the Frederickson group that meets. They were meeting monthly. I think Tom Segal would head that up. They would cover different topics. It's at a time when we really can't go. But that kind of brings me to why I pressed the button again was to be able to have the conversations that we had several years ago in trying to find a sweet spot for having transit out there. And the obstacle is the law. And when, you know, that's standing in the way of, of serving our constituents. And so it would be, you know, maybe we have to look at what has to happen to change the law or in, you know, those could be conversations of a, a specific group to try and tackle this problem. Because it, I believe there are many different angles that were looked at before that zoning change. I'm trying to think if that was four years ago, five years ago, something like that. So that's just an encouragement if we could do, you know, kind of get the, the folks together to brainstorm on that. Be, I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mathur, thank you for asking for an efficient way to understand the shift needs, demographic needs of the employees and employers in Frederickson. I, I would ask you to follow up with our Economic Development Department if, in your abundance of free time. If, if you could please, I think that one of the other ways is to just, is to connect with our Economic Development Department. And I'm certain they'll have a way to get you the best information they have and, and connect you very efficiently.
Thank you. I will do that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
One thing I'm reminded looking at this is that the taxing authority that we have now currently is a six-tenth sales tax, six-tenths of one percent sales tax. And if we were to go to Olympia to get a change in the law, that would in, in essence, change it. So it'd be easier. What they would probably do is take it out of the citizen's hands, make it a council manic vote. Would we be prepared to vote in six-tenths of a percent sales tax increase?
Nine-tenths.
Or nine-tenths, sorry, nine-tenths of a percent increase to restore the service on their behalf. And so if that's what we're seeking, that's the likely answer that would come back. So if we're not willing to do that, we could do all the advocacy, get it brought to us. And then if we're not willing to vote it in, it's squarely at our feet. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I believe we already have that option to do a council manic vote.
We don't for, for Pierce Transit's authority, Pierce Transit's authority to get to their maximum by state law is, must, requires a vote of the people.
Correct. I thought that was that, the vote or a council manic. I thought that was an option. But regardless, it's, it would still require state law discussions and whatever may come of that would. And no, I wouldn't be prepared to increase that much tax on, on a council manic vote.
Thank you. Just want to, I, I want to thank our friends at Pierce Transit for briefing the entire county council. Vice Chair Campbell and I have been briefing our colleagues regularly, but it's nothing like hearing from the CEO and Government Affairs Team in more detail in this way. So thank you for making time to come and brief the entire council. Vice Chair Campbell and I, you know, while we've been working on the Bus Rapid Transit project with partners along the corridor for many years now, it was very painful to take this step back and pivot away from the dream of bus rapid transit because of all the benefits it would bring to the region to move people along this very congested corridor and growing corridor of jobs and housing opportunity. So that the, you know, we, we were convinced, we, we did, we, we did vote to support this pivot to enhanced bus for the interim. We want to be clear, though, that we are not giving up on bus rapid transit. As the CEO said, I think many people might hear this presentation and say, oh, you're not going to do bus rapid transit along the Pacific Avenue Corridor, you're going to pivot to these other potential BRT routes. That, that, that is not what we should take away. This is an interim solution to deliver some improvement to the riders along the Pacific Avenue Corridor more immediately and at a cheaper cost. Want to really make clear, though, that the enhanced bus, while it's going to improve service in the near term, it is not the end solution. As, as was stated in the presentation, this corridor continues to get very congested. And without all of the elements that are designed in the Bus Rapid Transit project, all of the elements that are around speed and reliability, like dedicated bus lanes and the other enhanced features that make it more comfortable and safer for riders, without those kinds of improvements, the bus would just get stuck in general purpose traffic like everybody else. And it, it just doesn't make sense to, to do it. So you, you need those, the, the term that is used over and over again in the presentations is speed and reliability improvement. That's code for dedicated lanes. A, a more simple way of saying, there's more to it than, but a big part of it is dedicated lanes. There, there's some other features that, to, to make all of that work, to make dedicated lanes work along with the other traffic that goes along the Pacific Avenue Corridor. But that, that's, that is what's missing in enhanced bus. And at some point, you need to do it in order to have the, have the bus service be an option that actually saves you a considerable amount of travel time. I, I also just want to end by noting, you know, Councilmember Denson reported at the Peters, Peters County Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board how the Pierce County Comprehensive Plan, the countywide planning policies are up for ratification at the regional council. Well, there, there's an element in the ratification of the countywide planning policies that speak to, to just this. And so I just want to read this, this sentence that's, again, in the staff report of the Pierce County Countywide Planning Policies. It reads, "As communities and Pierce Transit continue to plan for growth, it will be important to ensure implementation of the planned Pierce Transit, bus rapid transit lines that support a significant portion of the county's growth allocation, especially in unincorporated urban areas, or to reassess growth allocations to the urban unincorporated areas if BRT service is significantly delayed." The point here is there are real implications to not implementing bus rapid transit and these sorts of transit solutions, real implications to our economic future and housing availability if we can't work together to, to deliver this. So I just wanted to remind us, you know, this, we're doing these for really important reasons. And I really believe Pierce Transit is working as hard as they can under the constraints they have. They have to work within the permitting authority of local cities and, and in this, in this instance, the State Department of Transportation and Pierce County and the, the, the cost it takes to implement these kinds of transportation solutions for a region. But there, there are real implications to our ability to grow and our ability to attract jobs if, if we can't deliver these kinds of solutions. So thank you again, Pierce Transit, for your update today. And I know the follow-up to come from the discussion that we had together just now. Thank you.
Thanks so much, you guys.
Under other business, there is proclamation review. There's two proclamations for review by council for next week's meeting. Fall prevention awareness was requested. And that, the text of that proclamation is at the end of the study session agenda, as well as diaper need awareness brought forward by Councilmember Hitchen. Also, the content, content of that proclamation is at the end of the study session agenda for review. Please get your comments to the sponsors or Ms. Price. When, if, if you have any. Is there any other business by members before we enter an executive session and a closed session this afternoon? Is there any other business by members? Not seeing any. Ms. Long or Ms. Murray, any other business before we enter the executive session? I think we're going to do the executive session first.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll do the closed session on, in our offices after, after we adjourn.
Correct.
And that'll be like digitally for anyone following that. I know we have, I know we have staff on the line to hear that, so I wanted to voice that. We have staff that will be participating in the closed session. That will happen at the end of the executive session. So we'll, we'll, we'll get to that as soon as we possibly, possibly can. Ms. Long to brief on the purpose of the executive session.
Thank you. And just to be clear, once we're finished with executive session, the council will adjourn study session and then go into closed session. Okay. So this is an executive session authorized by RCW forty-two thirty-one ten-one I. The purpose is to discuss with legal counsel matters of pending or potential litigation to which the county is or may become a party and to which public knowledge of the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the county. Before the council goes into executive session, Mr. Chair, if you'd state the time at which we'll return. What do you think, Todd? Fifteen minutes? Ten minutes?
So it's, it's, it's cumbersome to go in and out of executive session. So we'll do, we'll do fifteen minutes. And so we'll come back to, we'll, we'll come back out of the executive session at one twenty-seven PM. And so that's, so we'll, we'll, we'll come back at one twenty-seven PM. For staff listening online, we'll have our council staff coordinate with you for the closed session. But the current plan is to come back out of an executive session at one twenty-seven PM. We are at recess. I'm leaving the room. The council is back from its executive session. The time is one twenty-eight PM. And seeing no further business before the Pierce County Council in Tuesday's study session, we are adjourned.